All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Assani Council, City, excuse me, the Assani City Council Committee of the whole meeting to order if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, everyone is president except for Councilman Collison.
I think he gave you notice too.
Did he?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, he probably did, I just haven't, I haven't been checking my phone here much, so, all right, and then any public comments, that doesn't look like it. Moving on to E1, call the cul-de-sacs size discussion.
Good evening Mayor and Council, this was an item that was requested by Councilmember Merrill to have a discussion on the size of cul-de-sacs, as he can share when he was on a excursion in the plow truck, he had noticed and with the plow truck driver that there were some cul-de-sacs that are very small. Mr. Sylvester is going to talk on this as well, Councilmember Merrill if you want to take it away first, and then he'll share the size requirements that we have and our recommendation.
Okay, sure, so when I was on my ride along, one of the things that the Public Works employee mentioned was that the smaller cul-de-sacs took significantly more time and it was harder to get rid of the snow in those cul-de-sacs, so I was hoping that maybe us as a council could make some rule that cul-de-sacs have to be a certain size in new developments, that way it's easiest for Public Works to just do one swoop around instead of having to do a thirty point plow, and then it'll also give more space for snow to actually sit somewhere if it's a larger cul-de-sac. I can't remember, I believe it was Robin Road that had like the perfect sized cul-de-sac, I have it in my notes here, but I just thought that might be something that would be easy for us to implement going forward in the future.
I know last winter and stuff, I think a lot of the complaints that we get are from people in the cul-de-sacs, I think too, aren't they?
Yep.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, here's what I, here's what I found out, so Buckskin and Pinthor Plaid in nineteen seventy-six, they were platted as cul-de-sacs, not temporary cul-de-sacs, they do meet the minimum requirements, that is currently at sixty feet, the pavement width should be, the right away, including the right ways sixty feet, forty-five feet for residential pavement, forty-eight for industrial park pavement, temporary cul-de-sacs, rightways and pavement width requirements should meet permanent type requirements based on street classification, the recommendation would be to right away with two hundred and twenty-five feet and pavement width to a hundred feet, which is current standard and what's going in developments now.
And Council, the reason why he's bringing up those two cul-de-sacs is because when we reached out to the plow truck driver, which ones he thought were tight, those were the two that he gave.
Unfortunately, every city, I don't care what city you go to in the state of Minnesota, everybody cul-de-sacs, every city bitch about them, it's just, well, a lot of times what I see with a lot, some cul-de-sacs recently is that they are actually putting a center island in there, so you don't have to drive around it, is that gonna help, I don't know, but it might give place to at least wing some snow.
The other problem we have with some cul-de-sacs too, like those where there's no place to put the snow, they're so small, it's hard to turn around in them, we have older cul-de-sacs that are really big, so now you have a whole lot of snow, and then it's where does that snow go, you know, we have a resident that maybe at one time we could put all the snow in their front yard, now that person has moved out and now we can't put the snow there, so cul-de-sacs had a lot, have a lot of driveways, they don't have a lot of sod to put snow, so it's always where does the snow gonna go, where's it gonna fit, and some of these really big ones make it just that difficult too, because you gotta get the snow off the street.
Are cul-de-sacs allowed in new developments?
Yes, they are still allowed, and there is a requirement within zoning code of the size of the cul-de-sacs, I don't think we'll run into the issues that we had in some of our past sized cul-de-sacs, however, one thing that we noticed is it doesn't state anything for temporary cul-de-sacs, and our recommendation is that from an engineering standpoint and from plat reviews and things, that we actually recommend, or require, sorry, require all temporary cul-de-sacs to meet the size, minimum size of a true cul-de-sac, so we don't have any smaller ones coming into our new developments that as we know will push out to the outer edge.
And the ones we have on the books now, the size, are, are easy enough to plow?
No, we do have some that are small and tight, but I don't think that there's anything we can do about that without taking over people's front yard and...
I meant from here on forward.
Oh, here on forward, yes, the newest ones that we, Matt and I drove around together actually and tested some out, so, and then measured on GIS like what they were, and the new ones, Tiger Court for instance, is a hundred, that's where we got the hundred from, it's all the newest ones we had were a hundred with a hundred and twenty-five, and so that's our recommendation for all of them, and then also to have the, the temporary meet that for the district.
So Matt, I got a question for you, is there another way to plow a cul-de-sac more efficiently, say go in with the plow, open it up, maybe come in with a loader and a truck, I mean, I do know it takes more time, but it doesn't necessarily need to be done immediately?
So here's how we plow cul-de-sacs currently, we'll drive in the cul-de-sac, make a reverse, you know, against reverse traffic, wing the snow out into the middle, and then at the very end of the snow, at the very end of that event, we'll go in and clear the cul-de-sacs that way, some of these we have, we come back, we can clear with a front end loader, we don't always have the time to haul snow out, we did this year, we've made the time to haul snow, and some of these cul-de-sacs that got really tight, really bad this year, we don't always have the time to do that, but we do make that reverse pass, so then at least whoever, whoever's there can get out of their driveway, get to work, clear the driveway when they get home, whatever, that, that we're done and we're not plowing them shut, because some of these are, are, there's not a lot of place to put the snow, it's just all driveway with a little strip of grass, so in that event, it just makes more sense to go around the cul-de-sac backwards, go clean everything else out, and when you're done, go back and clear your cul-de-sacs, that's currently how we plow them.
So would, would it be helpful to have a size requirement on the front, the front opening of a yard so that there's more lawn and less driveways, so say if you have, you know, you have a hundred foot cul-de-sac and you have fifteen houses around it, is there a, a way that we can say that each house has to have a certain amount of road?
We, we all need to have a requirement for that.
Okay, and is that sufficient, are these new, are these new cul-de-sacs giving us adequate space for plow and for snow?
There is adequate space to make the loop in there with the plow, yeah, absolutely, it just, and a lot of times there's a backyard or something like, you can put the snow in, but that doesn't mean somebody wants the snow in their backyard, because a lot of times what it does is it kills the grass, you know, so, just because that one has a pristine place to put the snow, it doesn't mean that homeowner wants us to put all the snow there.
Okay.
That salt is, salt eats up the grass pretty hard.
Yep, I just didn't know if there's anything that we could do to help Public Works, and I know Elm Street is another one where it's got like a, it's like a dead end with weird sidewalk cul-de-sac thing, and I don't want to see any more of that coming into the city, I mean, that's, because that's gonna sit there empty for who knows how long, and I know in that neighborhood, there were two people there that complained because the city can't really plow that, so they have to do it themselves, so I don't want to see any more of that in our city, we just have to, if there's a way to stop those, like what you'd said, with the requiring of space.
Yes, I think our design standards currently that we have in code are sufficient, and then just to clarify, they're talking diameter, what's in code is radius, so that number looks double what we have in code, what we have in code is sufficient for what we're recommending, because it's the radius of the cul-de-sac. But we do require a temporary cul-de-sac, we don't allow stub roads any longer in our ordinance either, so we wouldn't allow that.
Okay.
Well, hopefully this winter isn't as bad, last winter was an exceptional year.
Right.
Hey, go down some of the back streets of Minneapolis, you ain't driving down them, George's probably seen them, but I'm even getting worse where I get into some residenials that back in there, and I'll tell you something, that little go-getter I got, go, go-kart I got for a van, I ain't going down them, because it's terrible, and I'll, I've said this to Matt before, Public Works does a fabulous job of pulling the snow, compared to other cities, Assani's is pristine.
I agree.
Yep.
So, yes, you know, I almost say, say to Matt, say, take you guys, give them a half a day pay if they come up with a better way of doing the cul-de-sacs, you know, it's, it might give them a brainstorm, you know?
We've, we have had extensive conversations about cul-de-sacs down there, trust me.
They, they, they suck, plain and simple English, they suck, and there's nothing you can do to change that, fortunately enough that they're, they don't have a cul-de-sac in every development, some areas depending on a lot, the land lays out, they have no choice, but most places try not to put cul-de-sacs in unless they absolutely have to, I don't even think the builder wants to put them in, because it does cost them a lot more money.
So what staff will do moving forward is, once, once that section of zoning code comes up for review or to make any other changes, because this wouldn't be significant, but just for clarification for future, that we consider temporary cul-de-sacs to have the same design standards as full cul-de-sacs.
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, moving on to E2, accepting brush continued discussion.
Okay, Mayor and Council, since our May sixteenth meeting, we started to accept that brush, currently I would say we probably have about twelve dump truck loads of brush we've gotten in from residents, and that would be about a hundred bucks a dump truck load to haul it out, so twelve hundred dollars would it would take, that doesn't include Public Works time to haul it out, but that is just for the brush to go to central landscaping down there.
It's not too bad, I mean, considering that's kind of probably the rush of the, the springtime over with now, right, so I mean...
The only thing I would say trumpet at this point is if we got a storm that came through town, that would be, that would be significant.
And then the fall probably again, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah, nobody's trimming trees or anything like that right now, I think there's more yard cleanup than anything.
Right.
Or if they had from the fall, they just didn't know what to do with it.
How much would it gonna cost you, have, either rent or have somebody come up with a chipper shredder?
I believe Crawford's, it was eight hundred bucks for a week for a wood chipper.
And then how much more would that cost us on top of that for manpower?
For what?
Manpower, labor.
Oh, well, I, honestly, I think it'd take, it's gonna take a couple of days for guys to just, you know, sit there and pull the brush out, because when we get it, we kind of push it up, so it takes up, you know, it doesn't take up as much room over there, so it's a kind of a twisted mess, so to say, right now, it's not like you just laid it on your trailer, it's been pushed up and, you know, got into, got into itself, you know, it's tangled up, so it's gonna take a little bit to get it out, it's doable, but it was gonna take a couple of guys dedicated to just chip and brush.
So it'd be more than twelve hundred bucks?
It'd be more than twelve hundred bucks, yeah.
What about somebody like a Revard or something like that, that has a portable...
They, they have came in in the past, but they're not gonna come for what we have right now, they're gonna, on a bigger scale, because they're gonna move equipment in here, chip it here, stuff like that, they're gonna wanna, you know, a pretty good...
So if we had, say, just as much come fall, to have them come in once a year, wouldn't that be more advantageous?
I don't have those numbers, what it cost the last time we had the company come in, having to do it the last time, I know that other cities had, like, I think it was XL came in and did it for free, and I'll tell you, the pile of the brush that we had was huge, and they wouldn't come and do ours, they, we had to pay ours, but it was a good chunk of money if I remember right, thousands.
That was like several years of buildup though, wasn't it?
That was several years of buildup, yep, yep, and they came in and chipped it onsite, brought the equipment here, set up, hauled it out, it was, it was several trips.
But we could, I suppose they'd chip it up too small or fine, that residents couldn't come and take it, I think Councilmember Merrill brought that up before.
It's like sawdust when you have smaller stuff that's chipped.
Yeah, it's gonna come out, it's not gonna be like you buy at the store, because, you know, three inch in diameter, there's a lot of stuff that's the size of my pinky or smaller, that's gonna get chipped up too, and then just be nothing left of that, not that it would have a use of some sort for somebody who would put around a tree or something maybe.
I guess I wouldn't be opposed to finding out what they would charge me become once a year, and it might break even, then we're just taking, freeing our guys up from taking that time to haul it down too, and fuel costs and everything else.
Yeah, I can most definitely find that out, I just didn't get that number together.
I don't know if you guys would be opposed against that, but...
I thought we had those figures in another meeting, maybe a month or two ago, yeah, for the, for the, yep, do you remember how much that was?
The numbers from last meeting, do you have those for the...
Of what it would cost?
For the chipper?
That was eight hundred bucks for the chipper, and then it was, if we had to buy a chipper, I want to say we were at that thirty-five thousand dollar mark, that was for a used chipper, that'd be about that eight inch diameter chipper, that's what it would cost for a chipper, if we were to buy, if we were to buy one.
But that was a discussion we had, we didn't ask for it.
A five thousand dollar minimum charge for Revard, right?
And then after the first eight hours, it's six hundred dollars an hour is what, so it's gonna be, I mean, five thousand dollars, north of five thousand dollars for them to do it, but I still think the best option would be to try and find a tree trimming company that would sponsor the, sponsor the event for the bonfire and chip, and chip the stuff for us for free.
So I did re, look into that further, and I did reach out to the city attorney just to make sure I was on the right path from what I had thought would be the correct way last time we talked about this, and it would be to create an RFP, to go out, so you were fair and equal to anyone who wanted to bid, and you were very specific, the challenge will be is, if we don't know exactly how much wood, we'll probably have to guess on the low side, so we were, they were guaranteed a certain amount to come for what they'd be coming for, and then if they, we had more than that, we'd have to push it off to the next year or something like that, and basically all the, the details of, if they could put a sign up, where could they put it up, things like that, would all have to be outlined.
Okay, I think that would be the best way to do it, because, I mean, say if we do this every year and you have a, some tree trimming company that wants to sponsor every year, and that saves us five thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years, that's...
Yeah, I think that would be, I mean, if it worked out and we found somebody that was interested in doing it, yeah, I think that would be, and I think we're all gonna hold off on the bonfire stuff for this year, I think, just timing wise, it was kind of tough to get it all figured out in time with everything else going on, but, but yeah, no, I think, I wouldn't be opposed to moving forward with, with that, and, I mean, I think Revard coming onsite, sounds like that will probably get pretty speedy, yeah.
Can we use like a multi-pronged approach and burn some of these piles too, and Public Work has time?
I don't know, I mean, that's kind of a pain for you guys to have to burn it, isn't it, if it's...
But it's quick and cheap.
Yeah, but then we're paying them comp time or time and a half to be there, because they're gonna have to burn after certain hours.
Yeah, what we...
Especially right now.
I think we checked into that, Al would allow ten, ten foot piles of brush, they need to allow us to burn over there?
Ten by ten, and he preferred it to be in winter with two inches snow cover, but if it smoldered at all, it had to be immediately put out, so it had to be attended by at least the number of people that it would take to put it out quick, or if there were any complaints, we had to put it out.
Yeah, how much more room do we have there, say we have twelve dump truck loads worth now approximately, I mean, how many could we, you think we could fit in that space without having problems, eighty, seventy, I don't know?
I would, I would base if that's twelve loads there now, you're probably looking at twelve, maybe forty-five, maybe, if it was pushed up enough, that would, that'd be really pushing it, that'd be, that'd be, you know, because we have the compost there too, you'd need room around that compost site to, for people to back their trailer up, unload their leaves, that type of thing, you know, and then turning the compost pile, they need room to turn the compost pile, I mean, I was, that, that might be a stretch honestly, but it would probably be pretty tall, we'd go to push it up as high as we could push it.
Two compost piles, usually because one's almost done and one's the fresh one, so...
Yeah, and then it's the dirt that's ready to get, to be used, that takes up space too.
I'd rather see them haul twelve loads out, or even say twenty-four at one time than many more than that, because then it's just gonna take up more of their Public Works time, it's gonna take longer, the more loads you got, it's gonna take that much longer, that much longer.
We have hauled out brush now, it's just kind of a filler, you know, like, what's not a lot going on today, let's go, we can haul some brush out, you know, nothing's, everything's going smooth, so this is just a filler for that days for one guy to go haul brush out, you know, that's kind of how it works now, we don't...
Yeah, it's not like it has to be all done, like, we gotta take two days to just do this in a solid stretch or anything, yeah.
Exactly, yep.
I asked that question to maybe know when we should plan the first fire, I mean, should we do it spring, say if we have twelve now, and maybe we expect to get twenty more dump truck loads the rest of the year, and early next spring, we're gonna be pretty much out of space, so I think we should probably plan for a, a bonfire in spring, that's, that's why I asked that question, so we're not getting full before we can do anything with it.
To, just as another side note, when we have had to snow, haul snow out in the winter time, it goes right where this brush is sitting, so when we get a lot of snow and we get a haul of snow, we need room for snow now, so there's that other side of that as well, so we have room right now for brush, but if we have to haul snow, that's where that snow is going, so...
Probably want to get it out of there by the end of the season.
Yeah.
And like you said, if they got a filler day or two, they can get rid of majority of it at a time.
But I think, I mean, I think it wouldn't hurt to try to get a plan, I mean, if we were able to get a company that wanted to sponsor it, I mean, I think that would be, but for this year, I mean, maybe we want to just look at, at hauling it out ourselves, but...
I mean, even if we have an event planned, we can say to these tree trimming companies, well, you can have your sign out starting whenever the RFP is closed, to the time of the first fire, or to, and then renew it based on a yearly, based on the fire cycle or whatever, because it'd be nice to get rid of that for free this year if we can, and...
I think Bram, didn't they have to close their compost site or their brush site?
They had to move it.
They had to move it, yeah, well, because it was in town more by the community center or something they had, and then they moved it outside of town, but now even that's closed, now is what I heard, but...
I'm not sure if it's, if they closed the second spot or not, but I'm pretty sure they moved it, because it was next to some lowland, they didn't have a buffer zone between the compost site and lowland.
Okay, yeah, but, I mean, it's, it's definitely a need, because you can tell it's getting used, you know, I mean, that's the thing, is that people, people did, they, they did want to bring their brush for sure, so, I think, that, that's good, I mean, I think we're, we're actually solving a problem for people, so, and it's not costing us a fortune, I know it's kind of a pain, but I mean, it's not, you know, life or death money wise, so, but, yeah, so how do we want to move forward with that, I mean, do we want to try to go out for RFPs and, and see how that goes over, and then in the meantime haul it away as you have time, and kind of take that two-pronged approach?
Then I think what I'll do is I'll start working on a scope of work for the, and that has all the details listed out, and we'll bring it back to Community Home and see if that's what you were envisioning, and then tweak it if need be, and then it would go to Council to put out, and might be good timing to kind of try to time that around fall, because then we'll have people trimming a lot in the fall, so we'll know more, that second wave of brush coming in. If that sounds good?
Sounds like a plan to me.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving on to E3, the LMC discussion.
So Mayor, this was your item to bring up for discussion, I do have some of the League of Minnesota Cities, we're talking about priorities for their, what they've advocated for on behalf of cities, I have a printout I can pass out if you'd like, there's also a shortened version of that, I can also print if, if, if you'd like.
Sure, I mean, I was just, the one thing I didn't really appreciate about what they did this last session, well, there's a few things, but, and I think that they, on the paid family and medical leave, they really didn't oppose that situation, you know, and for us as an employer perspective, you know, to, to not oppose that, and they, really all they did was, was try to get it to where employees would be required to use at least a partial use of their accrued leave, accrued leave before accessing the state program, and they didn't even get that done, you know, so I'm wondering like what, you know, like why wouldn't you have opposed it first off, and then just to ask that, you know, we, we make this small little tweak, and you can't even talk people into doing that, you know, I mean, what are we really getting from that relationship with them, I guess, and we do get our insurance through them, and we get, you know, a whole bunch of other things, and, just insurance wise, I guess, I should say, a whole bunch of other things, but, and Mike, I know you, you kind of had some thoughts on, on that as far as pricing and stuff too, but, but the advocacy part of it is just, I'm not really very impressed with, with their effort, you know, so even from the marijuana legalization kind of stuff, I mean, they fought for local control, if a city didn't want to do it, then they didn't have to, but I mean, if they're, I'm fine legalizing it, but I mean, a city, people should have local control over that kind of thing, you know, I mean, if a city doesn't want it, they shouldn't have to do it, you know, not, not that I'm saying we, we would be in that boat, but, and they're pushing, you know, racial equity and all that kind of stuff too, is part of what they're, you know, just like the Green Step City Program, and so, so I'm just wondering if they're really representing what we're actually going for, and, and if they are, why aren't they getting anything done, you know, and that's, so I don't know how much we pay, you know, versus, you know, for the insurance part of it versus the advocacy part of it, or if those two things are, you know, billed as one, one thing, or how that all works, but that was kind of the discussion I wanted to get started at least, so...
I'll have Mike share, because he'll share on the cost and how those things are bound together with all the other things that they do, but I did want to just point out, I send it to your, all of the council members' emails, so you have their priorities and initiatives, so you have that if you wanted to review it.
And we did talk, Josie and I talked a little bit about another coalition of greater Minnesota cities, that didn't seem to be any better of a fit probably, in my opinion anyway, but, but, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So first thing, first thing to understand is to stay in the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, we have to be a member of the League of Minnesota Cities, you know, cost on that I think are like seventy-four hundred bucks, I think is ballpark for, for annually, when we, it was probably in twenty seventeen, we did go out and look at property casualty insurance through private vendors, most did not want to participate at all, they wouldn't submit a bid at all, and in my recollection at the time was that the, the one that we did consider was not competitive to, compared to the league, so this is the thing they do, the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, that's the thing they do, that is the market, they don't go out, right, and so, you know, from an economics perspective, I want to see you specialize, that's, that's how everybody wins, as far as the advocacy and what do we get, first and foremost, most of what the League of Minnesota Cities advocates for is local control, now, that is not to say that they're gonna win, but, I mean, in the last two years, there was a lot of talk about preemptive zoning, right, we, I think everybody's probably at least heard a bit titch about that, right, where it was, you know, you're gonna be required to have a certain amount of low income housing, you're gonna be required to have a certain density housing, if you want to have single family homes all around town, you're not allowed to do that anymore, and that was the league that stepped in and said, no, zoning is a local prerogative, and it should stay a local prerogative, and the state legislature ought not be involved in that, so they did win on that, more tangibly, in the last session, you know, I should mention this too, every year at my Minnesota Government Finance Officers Association meeting, the one speaker that everybody wants to go to is Gary Carlson, he's the, the lead guy at the league, he's the one that spends, you know, in the last thirty, forty years, more time there than anybody else, and every year that I go, it's always a little bit of a different story, there's always this thing that the league has been advocating for for eight years that never got anywhere that suddenly got done, or the league wanted to get this, this, this done, and didn't, and the next year it's, we wanted to get this, this done, and we finally did, so it, it is, it's, it's not a straight line, that's just how that works. Fiscally, from, you know, from a finance director's perspective, there is one thing that the league does that nobody else does, and that is advocate for LGA, there is nobody else that is gonna advocate for LGA, and this year they came through, I'm, for the next budget cycle, I'm gonna get an extra three hundred thousand dollars, and that continues, and then it's, 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 it will step up over time, that's a, that's kind of a big deal, you know, even if I gotta drop, you know, seven thousand dollars a year, I can put down seven thousand dollars a year for a long time in exchange for three hundred thousand, I mean, so where is that, and, I mean, I know, I wouldn't disagree, there are definitely policy failures for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need any more mandated state spending on things like paid family leave, I mean, that's, to me, that was the biggest issue, is like, why wouldn't you, just from, and I get what you're saying, and I think they've, they've done some good things too, but that one really rubbed me the wrong way, like, why wouldn't you just oppose that outright instead of, you know, trying to pull, you know, tweak at the edges of it, you know, it just, but...
What is the total cost per year the city sends to League of Minnesota Cities?
So for just the league, just the league membership, it's, you know, about seven, seventy-five hundred, something in that range.
Seventy-five hundred-ish?
Yeah, about that.
And includes insurance?
No, insurance is a whole separate deal, maybe we, we do the property casualty insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities, I want to say that's one eighty, one eighty, one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, that's for all our stuff, that's everything, that's every building, that's the contents of every building, that's everything, public and open, streetlights, the whole nine yards, then there's the workers' comp portion, now, League of Minnesota Cities, like, they facilitate that, but fundamentally, that's actually through Berkeley Risk, maybe it's here and or there, you know, and that's maybe one ninety-ish, one hundred and ninety thousand a year, and that, but that number has changed a lot, that number has changed a lot, we peaked probably in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and now we're starting to see it come back down a little bit, and that all goes to the same thing any insurance company do, they're gonna look at your history, what claims have we been paying out on, and then that's based into the formula, so, we, between those, between those things, yeah, it's a pretty significant...
Big chunk, three hundred and fifty thousand a year, did I...
Oh, yeah, if, if not a little bit more, yeah.
But we're gonna have to pay that either way, whether we're with... But we're going to have to pay that either way, whether we're with the League of Minnesota or not, we have to pay insurance and workman's comp, so.
And they're also getting us a discount on our workman's comp and our insurance.
And I should also mention too, is, is one of the, the other side of that is, it varies year to year. Because the League of Minnesota Cities and Trust is just the, the members of the League of Minnesota Cities, if, if they collect premiums based on the actuarial guidelines, right, so we say, all right, we expect claims to go on this trend line. And they don't, and they end up sitting on an extra forty million dollars, we get a cutback. So there are some years where I'll pay, I'll write a check to them for a hundred and eighty thousand, and then at the end of the year, I will get a check back for thirty or forty thousand. So the numbers I'm giving you do not include those rebates, no. Some years that, some years you get back twelve hundred bucks, other years you get back thirty, forty grand. Based on, based on that, so there's no, important kind of thing to take away, there's, there's no profit taking, right? So if I sign up with, if I signed up personally, if I sign up a State Farm and they start making a ton of money on me because I never have any claims at my home, they definitely are not sending me any money back, I know that, but somebody at State Farm is keeping it, so.
Are there any requirements from the LMC that the city has to follow? On, on any of these different items that we have to pay out for?
You mean, like, actions that we would, we are required to take in order to have insurance, or?
Or when we pay, is it a membership, I didn't write down what each one of these fees were, but.
Mike just said it, so to be a member of the league is the seventy-five hundred, but then the, you can't get, you can't use that insurance that they offer if you're not a member, so. So that's, that's where the, and the membership of the league is really what covers the advocacy part of it, I mean, that's what you're paying for with that, but then as a bonus sort of of that cost, you get to be in this pool for insurance, and, and that's probably the biggest advantage is really the insurance part of it, and, and I mean, and I don't disagree, they have done some good things too, it's just.
LGI funds are huge, and if that advocacy for that, you know, like you said, I could pay out a lot of seventy-five hundred dollar checks for three hundred thousand. And if we get that for next three, four years, that's a lot of money coming back into our coffers. I, for one, I don't, I don't think we should rock that boat, I, I understand where you're coming from.
I mean, I just wanted to see if there was other options out there, is all.
I understand exactly where you're coming from, I don't agree with a lot of our laws, but there are laws and you got to follow them.
I'd like to answer council member Heeman's question though. So in my time here, the only time I can think of a time where they said, you must follow X, Y, Z, or we will drop you, kind of, notice would be when the mask mandate came out and there were some cities that were saying that we aren't going to enforce, or we don't agree with the law that was being set for the COVID mandates. They did put out something on that, that you are required to follow the state law, if you don't follow state law, we may not carry you with that, with their insurance. So that, that was the only time that I can ever recall.
But also at that time, at that time, we, we all agreed that we didn't agree with it, but we have to follow state guidelines. And that, and that wasn't just.
And that's all it was, it was a guideline.
Well.
Well, we did do a resolution at that time too.
Yes, we did, but.
Of course, that doesn't necessarily mean anything.
But you got to realize, it wasn't just cities that followed those guidelines.
And that wasn't just directly toward, directed towards us, that was just a general statement that they had put out, but if you recall, that was only, that was one thing that I can think of that.
Right, so they, they can pressure cities into doing things that, I, I've just never been advocate of L, LMC, I mean, they're, they're the biggest lobbying group in the city, yeah, they do, or in the, in the state, and they do, do a lot of good, but, like you said, they're getting.
Too liberal.
They're getting an agenda, there's no doubt about it.
Well, now, see, there's a market, there's a market there for somebody that wants to go out and tap it, that if you want to start some, some new program, but.
I think everybody is stuck with them right now because there's really not another option.
Not really any competition, yeah.
Not very viable.
And there's nothing we can really do to even cut back on, on any of these expenditures that, that we give them.
Yeah, well, that was, yeah, I mean, that was all, I just wanted to kind of think about it a little bit more and at least, at least see kind of what we were getting and, and how it was working out, but, yeah, well, I don't think there's any action we necessarily needed to take, I just wanted to get info on it and.
The only thing I might add is, is that, you know, every year the league does go through and set policy priorities, and that is something that a council member can simply ask to be a part of, right, and so they'll break up into, into groups, and there are dozens, if not, you know, well over a hundred parties that will say, all right, you know, based in, within the, the scope of financing, these are the, you know, these are the priorities, within the scope of public safety, these are the priorities. You know, in planning and zoning, these are the priorities, and so those are things that, that council members can, can participate in and say, this is how this, this is how we think this ought to be. And, you know, and then you kind of, just kind of win the debate or you don't, I guess, is, but.
How often are those?
I believe that they have four main committees, there may be subcommittees, but four main committees that meet four times a year. Sometimes I think they're, you know, through the months of June through September, kind of that fiscal planning kind of timeframe, but I, I believe they're on their website.
Would that be possible to make it a committee that someone has to do on the city council? To do something with the League of Minnesota Cities, I mean, I feel like we do a lot of stuff that, I mean, they give us, they supply us with our insurance and a lot of money, and I think it's kind of important that we would be involved in with them, I guess even more so than something like the school board or some of the other ones we're on. Is that something that we can add?
Yeah, that is with the resolution that we get, do at the beginning of the year when we designate committees, it could be added if that's council's desire. My understanding from the committees that they do, there's not a cap or a threshold of so many people, so I think you just have to express interest when they're asking who's interested. And if the council has appointed a certain council member to do any of the LMC committees, or maybe you want to divvy them up and one person is on each of them, or that's definitely something that you could do.
That'd be something I'd be interested in us doing, I think.
Yeah, we should talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, we should maybe come up with that meeting schedule and then we could come back at another meeting and kind of see if, if we wanted to set something up for next, to start next year.
Yes, I will add that.
Thanks.
I'd like to add too, that the LMC is just a wealth of information, I mean, I've learned so much reading through their stuff over the last ten years, it's unbelievable, so, I mean, as far as the information they put out, a lot of it is really well-written and useful information, but I'm not happy in the direction they're going in. Hearing Josie just say about the masks and, and how they kind of were forcing cities to enforce it, that, that, they, that's way overreach in my opinion.
But that wasn't, that was from.
No, not to enforce it, just to clarify, no, not to enforce it, but they just encourage, or said cities need to follow state laws.
George, you have to realize, that didn't come from them, that came from federal up higher.
But they're the group to stand up against it.
Well, they do, but then you have to realize, they get things cut if they don't follow certain guidelines, just like we do. If we don't follow certain guidelines, we could lose LGA funds. So you, you, it's a fine line to walk on, but don't blame one group because they're being directed by the, you know, Washington DC saying this is what you're going to do.
Yeah, I mean, they're incentivized to do it like that, I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're work comp, if they're providing you work comp insurance and all your staff dies of COVID, well, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't know if that's exactly a, a good analogy, but I mean, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, they're, they're, they're bound by more than just, just opinion, you know, yeah, right.
They're bound by other people than just them sitting at the League of Minnesota Cities. You know, it's not just the League of Minnesota Cities, it's League of every single city.
And you got to remember.
And that's part of the problem with them.
And you got to remember too, is on any large insurance pool, there's, they, any, any large insurance pool is buying reinsurance from another insurance company. And how you manage your insurance pool is going to dictate whether or not you are able to buy reinsurance from another company. And that company is going to say, yeah, I could have a deal with you on that, except totally going to need you to do more bloodborne pathogen training, or whatever, 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 and at some point you say, okay, like, I, we, we gotta, you know, we gotta cover ourselves and that, that's the game that gets played. Public sector, private sector, that is, especially insurance, that is the game that gets played. Insurance and then reinsurance and on and on it goes, and there's always somebody saying, I, we don't have a deal unless you do this, and at some point you get in a hard spot and you go, okay.
All right, well, yeah, no, I think that was a good discussion though, and I think that is a good, a good idea that we should, should look at, at having that be a committee assignment, so. If, if we're going to be a part of it, we might as well have our input as part of that discussion, so. All right, moving on to E four, the Sandpoint well discussion. And this was kind of another one that I guess I had sort of brought up, kind of, or at least had a question from a resident about, and I had talked with Matt and you said it, you didn't think it was allowed, and I talked to Josie and it, it was allowed, and so I think you were just kind of looking more for clarification, I guess, on a few things, right, is kind of where we're at with it?
Right, so given the question, so we don't prohibit Sandpoint wells going in for irrigation. We do have a couple of different sections that talk about private wells. Specifically, what I believe you were talking about was for irrigation, correct?
Yep.
So, we don't say that they're not, they're prohibited, however, we don't really outline a great way in our city code to allow it. In digging into it further, part of the thing that Matt and I have always been told is that we don't allow it, however, it doesn't say that in city code. So there is probably a really greater understanding of the community would say, it's not allowed here. But yet our code doesn't really say that. So in digging into it further, we did include some information about what the Department of Health requires. If we are going to allow them for irrigation, there are some things that we should look at for water irrigation, like the even odd, even though it's a private well. Also within our dwisma area and things like that, so if something that council wants to look at really allowing openly, I guess, as a, for lack of a better word. Matt's got some more information on that to share.
Mayor and council, so here's what I, excuse me, this is what I came up with, so a plumbing permit would be required to ensure that they are not connected to potable water. They would need to meet all the setbacks, there are several setbacks that would make it so somebody wouldn't be able to put a, a drive point well in. Some of those would be fifty feet from any sewer pipe, twenty feet from a storm drain, eight, eight inch or larger, they wouldn't be able to put a Sandpoint well in there. The Department of Health requires that a notification permit be filled out, preferably before the wells goes in. They may come out and look at the well after it does come in to make sure, verify that it does meet the setbacks. If an attempt was made to put a Sandpoint well in and they weren't able to meet water, they'd have to have that well sealed, they couldn't leave the pipe in the ground, that well would have to be sealed at that point. The same would be if that well was abandoned. The use of, for lawn watering, irrigate purches shall be exempt from the water restrictions, so they would be able to water every day if they did have a well in there. They would need a sign, it need be provided to let them know, let staff know that they have alternative water source, they have their own well. Not approving wells within the well protection areas should be strongly considered as they are highly and moderately vulnerable areas within the drinking water supply and management area, that's that map I have attached there. We wouldn't want to put wells in that area at all, I'm trying to get wells that are in that area sealed currently, and there might be some grant money for that next year, I'm just got to dig into that a little bit further for next year. The increased construction of holes that have a negative impact to the city's municipal well drinking water aquifer because of the area that we're in. Those are some things to consider that I was able to find out.
And if they pass all of those things, ultimately it's up the, up to the Department of Health to allow it, they have to file for an application with them. Even, even if we said, yeah, look from our area where you're located, looks good, you're going to register with Public Works, pull your appropriate permits, it's still at the end of the day, it's up to the Department of Health.
Yeah, they require some other things, there's just how to put one in, they require certain things to install one, it's not just, you, you need to follow some rules to put it in.
And one of the reasons they have to be sealed is so any contaminations can't get back in the ground source. So it is like you and I had this conversation, I did say, the state needs to be involved with all wells. Menards, hardware stores, everybody's selling well points illegally because they're supposed to be registered with the state. Nobody's doing that, I knew that twenty years ago when we had our business in town. That's why we quit selling wells, because it was too much of a hassle. There's a lot of reasons to that, huh?
I don't think they required it until nineteen ninety-two, anything before that, they never had a requirement for it.
Code's changed, George, just like drivers, you know, driving education changes, everything changes.
Sure.
Our, my, my plumbing code book changes every two years. What I could do twenty years ago, I can't do today, but what I'm doing today, I couldn't do twenty years ago. It's, it's, it all changes and all evolves. You get, and I'm not going to use any specific names or terms or anything for people, but you get a group, a certain group of people that feel that you're going to contaminate my water source, or that, you know, we should be doing this, or we should be doing that. There again, they lobby, get the right place, right person, right place. Twenty years ago, you couldn't put, you didn't have to put a one-point-six gallon flush toilet in, now you do. Because somebody from the state of Minnesota Department of Health went to New Jersey and they thought this was a great idea, so that was what we had to do. And now that's what we're stuck doing. They don't flush with the crap, they have issues with them, but they're conserving water. Water conservation has become more and more and more and more stringent in the years. So all that is a change. If I, if I could, I would have put a, I'd put a Sandpoint in my house, I don't want to my lawn every single day. But there's going to be a drawback. That Sandpoint I put down is going to be very hard water, it's going to stain my siding, stain my concrete, stain any car that's sitting outside, because it's hard water, very hard water. Next of all, I got to disconnect that well, let it drain, so it doesn't freeze over winter. Then I got to go back and re-prime it, and I think I've been to your house and I told you many times, if you're trying to re-prime a well, it sucks. I could spend twelve hours trying to re-prime a well. That Sandpoint gets plugged, Joe Schmuck is going to go along, pull that thing up, shove just a piece of pipe down there and create nothing but problems. And next thing you know, you're contaminating somebody's well source. That's why it's not a good idea. I, I would think it'd be, it's a great idea, you have so many loopholes to jump through to do this, it isn't worth it.
So I have a question, how does that work with grandfathered-in wells? I'm, I'm not totally familiar with.
For irrigation or for drinking?
For drinking.
So what we, if you had, if you were, had a property that it was not stubbed out, private wells for drinking water are allowed, even still now, if they don't have access, access to water within a reasonable distance because maybe you were annexed in or something, you're on the outskirts, you still can have, even if your, your well doesn't pass tests, you can, if you have to punch in a new well, that is permitted. So I think most of them fall within that, as the city's grown, they may still have it, which they're not forced to connect until that well fails. Those ones that are, you could say grandfathered in, but really they're only there as long as they're fine, and you, if they're contaminated, you can bleach them, you can try to get them back up so it's drinkable again, but ultimately if it fails, then you connect if the water, if the hookup's available.
I think Sandpoints for irrigation is a great idea. We have a shortage of water, I would like to see a way for future additions, I mentioned it a little bit to Councilman Lundin. When we put in new developments, is there, can we look in the future of a way and, and, and check with the DNR about putting in a well point system for irrigation and have separate hookups? Is there, is it even feasible, because that would, that would really relieve a lot of our water pressure.
Well, there are some restrictions for having a public water supply, we have to be able to provide water, so having, if there was an independent one for that one property, might be allowed, but not like a, a mini well, you know, kind of development, no, I wouldn't think so. But we are making sure that we pay, like, we stub out these properties with our infrastructure charging water rates, you wouldn't charge anything if they have a Sandpoint, so we have to also look at the cost for infrastructure. As we put the infrastructure in, if you allowed everyone to put in wells, are we getting back what we need, it changes our rate structure potentially, it changes how much we're saving money for, for our capital improvement things, so there should be that kind of consideration too. For doing it at a big scale, like what you're talking about, for sure.
I get where you're going though, because I mean, a lot of this issue that we're having as far as having to do, move our well up, you know, is irrigation, yeah. Well, I don't know, I mean, what, so I came in here, I mean, it was a question from a resident, you know, looking for clarity, and I don't know that I've, it's clear as mud now, I guess, it's kind of, so you guys tell us, I mean, what, how do we, how do we go from here to clarify this and to, it's not prohibited, but it's not recommended, but it's, so what is it, you know?
If it is something that. If it is something that council wants the ability to have, or residents to have, I think that the direction should be for staff to write up some more guidelines within our city code, for people to follow. So if they are done, it's done right. If you don't want to allow it, there is a very small sentence that needs to be taken out, because it gives them clarity whether they're allowed or not allowed.
Okay.
Well, right now, city code sounds like it's so vague, just let them follow state guidelines, not worry about it.
It's kind of, kind of what I was thinking too.
We still have to, as, as, as Mr. Sylvester said, we still have to follow those guidelines. And I, and, and I'm not trying to be a dick, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I will not, I will argue and fight this until those guidelines are followed. Because if I don't, I can lose my license, because my license is tied to the Minnesota Department of Health.
Well, we already have guidelines, I, we weren't.
No, no, he's talking about you have to have a separate permit, you gotta, you contact the state, you gotta make sure there's no cross-contamination, this is what he says is recommendation, those are not in the code right now.
I'm not arguing anything, Steve, I just said, let them, let the city residents follow exactly what's on the books right now.
I think, though, before they fill out the application and go through the permitting process with the state, they should know if we're gonna allow it or not, because that's a lot of wasted time for them to go through the Department of Health, and then to find out that it's in our drinking water management area, which is something we're supposed to manage. And then we're gonna say, no, they've now done a bunch of work, because they didn't know, it doesn't say in city code that it's not allowed within the dwisma area. So being more defined about where it would be permitted and not permitted, before they even go through the headache of trying to get one.
I mean, I see what you're saying, though, George, is, let's just leave it vague, and if we're, we're not worried, haven't been worried about it for the last hundred and some years, or whatever, then, you know, why worry about it now, if it's just gonna cause more headaches for everybody?
If I can chime in again, I think that, you know, just having been in the system and looked at that map, and looked at what our system is all like out there, there's a lot of houses that are not gonna be able to ever have a Sandpoint well in, just because of those setbacks. You know, there's sewer lines going through people's backyards, store pipe going through people's backyard. Now, you're, in one of them situations, you don't get one, you know what I mean? So, my fear would be that you allow people to have them, and you have people to put them in, just because my neighbor's got one, he can, I can too, when they have a pipe and they shouldn't be. I think we just open that up a lot, that's, because there's a lot of houses would not meet that requirement.
Yeah, I think by, yeah, I don't know, you guys wanna move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Tax notification, so E5. The county uses Everbridge, right, so?
Correct, it's a notification system that you can sign up for to get countywide alerts. They used to have code red, red code, previously.
Okay, so where this discussion kind of came from was Steve, when we had that little water issue, oh, well, you guys are aware of it, of course, but, you know, Steve was thinking that it would be nice to have kind of a, a way to alert people, sort of. And Ever, this Everbridge, though, it looks like you have to sign up for it, so, I mean, you could, but, I mean, if we were to, say, ask the county to put out a notification, I mean, will they do that for us, or is it something where?
Everbridge is the standard for the emergency management side of it, so they would, if there's an emergency, which that would constitute an emergency management piece. But I think the, the piece.
Well, so you're like that water issue, you're saying that would, or you said it wouldn't?
It would, you, you could constitute that to be an emergency management, because it's an infrastructure piece.
Yeah, right.
You know, if it's just that we're closing down Whiskey Road because we're doing potholes, that's, that's a different issue, right? So, it's there, and I, I can check, and I haven't heard any information on that, so, because they haven't really, they pushed hard about two or three years ago for enrollment, because you have to voluntarily enroll to then obviously receive. And it's a great program, as long as we get the enrollment, but the numbers, as far as percentage of enrollment, is fairly low, because it's, you have to, after to tell you what a great idea it is to throw your number into this Everbridge, and we're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna sell you magazines or subscriptions or something, right? So it's very, the, the enrollment's not to the number it needs to be. You know, it's grant-funded through emergency management grants, so the, the, the infrastructure's great, and it makes sense, but the enrollment's not there, yeah.
Okay, because what, what the point was, that Steve was making, is that not everybody gets Facebook, right? So, I mean, we put all that stuff out on Facebook, which is great, but there's a lot of people that, that don't have Facebook, or don't check it, or, you know, are not following that kind of stuff, and so.
So I have a question on this one, I know there's a lot of politicians that use it for campaign texts. Is that something that we have ever looked into, I don't know how much that is per text, I don't know.
That was something, that's what I had mentioned to Mayor Gordon about. But, I myself, every time I drove by that area that that tweaked it, I'd get like fifty texts from that politician, and it's like, arrgh, it drove me nuts. It's a good idea, but that's why I brought it up to him. There's a lot of people, I mean, they were posting on Facebook, I ain't got any water, waters, blah, blah, blah. You know, she sends something out on Facebook, and like I said, not every, you know, you take an elderly couple that aren't on Facebook, you know, they do have a cellphone.
Yeah, I mean, the way that, the way that that program actually works is you, you, it's a, it's actually a person sitting there and clicking the button, that's how they get away with that, so that you don't have to have it where it's, otherwise you have to sign up. If it's just an automatic text, people have to sign up to enroll in that, just like that Everbridge is. But if it's a person sitting there clicking a button, over and over and over and over again, and it just loads the number, loads the number, loads the number, that's okay to do that, so that's how that works. And it's, I think it's like maybe a sixth sense a text, or something like that, it's not very much, but, I mean, we could, and I don't think you have to sign up for anything monthly-wise, so maybe we want to look into a program like that, because I think it is just as needed and as used, you have to buy a list, you know, I think it was, I think, because I did do that, it was like two hundred and fifty bucks, or something like that, for the list for the zip code of Isani, or, you know, so. Maybe we want to check that out, I guess, I mean, that might be a little bit easier, and then we could use it for stuff that's, but, I mean, you don't want to annoy people either, you know? So really, the emergency thing, but like you said, if they're not enrolled, what does it matter? You're not, still not gonna get the word out, you know, so. And it would be nice to, to let people know about something like that, if we, if we could, so.
I do want to bring up, and like, you know, jur, uh, Councilman Heeman was there. Ms. Wood came in, I messaged her as soon as I noticed there was a problem, she's calling Public Works. She personally showed up, her and I went and got barricades, and we loaded them up in my truck, and brought them out to the street. Ms. Wood is doing a fabulous job as administrator, and I don't think there's many other people that would, as administrator, would step up to the plate like she did. You know, she's on Facebook immediately posting it, which, right now, that's our way of getting out something social media-wise. And that's why, you know, when Mayor Gordon and I were talking, I thought, God, there's gotta be a different way that we could send out a, you know, a, a message out to residents to let them know. I'm not tech guy, I'm no tech guy, so, there, but there's gotta be a way of doing it.
I, we could definitely look into it, I have not looked into that before, so we can see what the options are. Also, another option down the road, way maybe down the road, if we do get a dynamic sign, not that everyone's driving at the time you have an emergency, but when we're putting messages on there about our upcoming state council meetings, you can put things like that, road closure, something about water pressure, or, you know, if you have to.
I mean, that was a unique situation, but, I mean, it would definitely be nice to have the ability in a situation like that to, to address it a little bit more directly, and make sure everybody knows kind of, but then again, if you're like me, and you didn't wake up till nine o'clock to get ready for church, or whatever, it was already done, I didn't even notice. And that's, that's, that can be attributed to our staff, I mean, you guys are.
You gotta realize, Mr. Sylvester said, he, how many times have you had to do something like this in an emergency?
It's been very few, I mean, I think probably seven times, six, seven times in twenty years, where we've had a plug blow out like that, you know, a pipe.
And typically, we have the water tower online, and so you don't notice it. So we've had water main breaks before, but you don't notice it, because it's isolated fast, attributed to great staff, and we have the water tower, so.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed, though, to finding out if we can kind of get some pricing on buying a list, how much per text, at least so it's an option, that we could have the list ready to go, and if we had a situation come up, that it was available to us, you know?
And I think it could be a great tool to use for emergency management purposes, for other things, because if we did, you know, hopefully never have a tornado come through, or something catastrophic, that might be a great way to push out information for local, and we know they're gonna get it.
Yeah, right.
Whether they signed up or not.
Yeah, right, yeah, so I, I wouldn't be opposed to checking into it and getting some pricing, for sure, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, alright, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Lundin, and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign, motion to adjourn carries five, or, excuse me, four zero. And, uh, well, no, we've got planning right now.